We've invited Raftellus Todd Christiano to come speak with us about connection fees. We've been working with Raftellus to review our current connection fees. We thought this would be appropriate since we're coming up, we want to do a rate increase and have a vote hopefully in April. And while we have the hood open on the car, we'd like to go and look at everything water and make sure how our fee structures are. The rate increase, remember as we discussed this summer, is needed for advanced metering infrastructure, AMI, disinfection is the second big item, and then O and M and pipe replacement. This year's current budget, we had counted that we were going to get the rate increase a little sooner, so actually January through June, we had counted on having revenues coming in from a past rate increase.
So no pressure for April?
Yeah, so we're 2 million down on our projected revenues.
Oh, boy.
But, and then as far as, we need to have a first and second reading in January to have this teed up for April to get our vote. And so, the things we asked Todd to go over, we kind of looked at three different scenarios on the connection fees. And we looked at, in the Strategic Water Supply Plan, it showed augmentation, which you guys know we're pursuing that option, but to get the first 3 million gallons a day, it does, we have to have cooperation from Dell City and Midwest City. And, you know, $100 million expenditure to make that happen, to get that 3 million gallons actually flowing. And then, the second option in the water supply plan was Oklahoma City, and so we can use that as an interim measure. So we just asked Todd to also look at what would a connection fee be if we were to go to that route? Was the, we already have that connection established, what do they have to pay back in to be able to use that as, for additional water? And then the third one, the wells are back in play because the Water Resources Board recent study showed that the aquifer can supply 2 acre feet per acre. We had worked, we were worried about that back when we did the water supply plan study. And so we said, go on, look at that one also, just to, so have all these in. And then, he's going to show us the connection fees of what we could raise the rates to. It's not that you have to, but it's, it shows that we, it would be justifiable to take them to these numbers. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Todd to start the presentation.
Thank you, Chris. That was very helpful. I'm going to stand for this evening. I tend to walk around a little bit, so. My name is Todd Christiano. It's great to be back in my home state, and I live in Denver, but Oklahoma's my home, so it's good to be back. I am with Raftellus, we're a financial consulting firm, nationwide financial consulting firm that works with utilities and cities and general government for solving financial issues. So what we're doing here with the City of Norman's, our bread and butter, working with utility, water and wastewater utilities, doing financial planning and connection fee studies. So this is what we focus on. We're not an engineering firm, we're purely a financial firm. So with that, I'll get started. Like Chris said, we're talking about some financial things today, and two items. One is connection fees and financial plan. I'm going to talk about the connection fees first because they feed into the financial plan. They're both independent calculations of things, but yet, they're interdependent. And we'll see that as we go through the scenarios. So I'm going to provide some information about what connection fees are, show what those different fee alternatives that Chris mentioned are, and then we'll talk about what a financial plan is, in terms of how it works within a utility, and then how, what the utility's needs are, and how the connection fee alternatives play into these different financial planning scenarios. So our goals and objectives for this study was basically want to make sure that the City of Norman's water utility is financially healthy, not just today, but planning for the future. As many of you know, water infrastructure has a very long life, and it's out of sight, out of mind, and sometimes it's costly to repairs, more costly to repair. So planning for those things is not just a one-year, two-years, multi-year, 10-years, 20-years, planning for those different types of asset management programs. So, part of our financial planning process, we wanted to look at sustaining utilities' health, want to obviously be able to fund operations, salaries and wages, materials, chemicals, utilities. We also want to optimize our funding options. What does that mean, optimizing funding options? Well, as you may know, that capital projects are fairly expensive, large ones are very expensive in many different ways of financing, through grants, state loans, revenue bonds, or user rates. We want to find that optimal balance of user rates and bonds and loans and grants to help balance that out. I'll go into more detail on that later. We also want to maintain equity between new and existing customers. What does that mean? Well, we're talking about connection fees, and those are those one-time fees for new customers. I'll go into detail on that in just a moment. But we also have existing customers that have been using the system, and they've also paid for a system that new customers can buy into. And the combination of user rates and connection fees are a way to balance the equity between new and existing customers. And the last one here, it's even more important, meeting your financial performance metrics. You have some outstanding bonds, you have bondholders, and the bondholders want to make sure that you're going to be financially sound so they can get their bond payments, right? Every year. So there's some metrics that we need to follow and maintain or exceed in order to ensure that we can be a financially healthy utility and not jeopardize your credit risk with booties or S and P. So, all of that, balancing all of those things, we want to minimize the impact to the customer. And what does that mean? That means we want to maintain a low bill, providing the best service as possible, through balancing all those others. Well, City of Norman's not alone in terms of increasing pricing. This is a, from Bureau of Labor Statistics, it shows the black line there, it shows the annual CPI, basically inflation index over a number of years. The red dotted line is that increase in water and sewer bills. And you can see past, over the past 10 years, it just becomes almost exponential in growth. And it's continuing to be that way in some areas more so, in some areas not so much, but we're starting to see it move west, increasing rates because of aging infrastructure. And so, the City of Norman's not alone with those kind of pressures with maintaining the system. As part of our analysis, we didn't pick this out of the air, the way we approached this, there's a number, there's industry guidelines, there's manuals here, as you can see, American Water Works Association, the Water Environment Federation are both the key industries for the water and wastewater world, and they have manuals that help prescribe the principles of how to apply what we're doing today and coming up with the appropriate fees for the City of Norman. You know, we've had a lot of changes since 2015 study, and that's the last time this was done, was in 2015, there's been a lot of changes. A lot of those projects that were in that plant have been completed, so when we go back and look at connection fees, we kind of have a different picture now. There's the three projects that Chris has identified with those future capacity and supply projects, and the connection fees were last adopted in 2015, and water rates were adopted last in 2015. So it's been over six years since there's been a rate increase or a connection fee increase. Best practice is to look at it every two to five years, and we'll go into a little more detail in a moment. So let's start with the connection fees. Before I do that, any questions so far of what we were asked to do by the city? Okay.
Say that you said every two to five years?
Depending on, depending on the situation, if you're a high-growth community, you might want to look at it fairly frequently. But if you're a more mature utility, maybe every five years, but at most every five years. Doesn't mean you need to adopt or update or increase your fees, it's just reviewing to say, are they reasonable?
Thank you.
So, let's go into a little more detail about what a connection fee is. It's a one-time charge, so if you make an analogous to, say, joining a gym. When you join a gym, you pay an initiation fee, and they give you access to all of the facilities, all of the locations, at any time. There will always be a space for you when you show up. And the user charges are your monthly charges to make sure that that treadmill works when you show up. So that's one way to think about it. So it's a one-time charge, and it's for new customer demand only. So someone who's new, who has not placed any demands on the system, we need to be able to reserve capacity for them. So they're going to plug into the system, or tap into the main, and they need to have a reservation of capacity to serve them. Three-quarter inch meter is what a single-family customer typically has, and the capacity of a single, a three-quarter inch meter. And basically, they're buying into the share of capacity, they're buying into share, their share of the facilities, those backbone facilities required to serve them. When we talk about backbone facilities, we're talking about the water treatment plant, wells, deep, deep transmission mains, storage tanks, fire protection, those sorts of things. Those are the backbone facilities that need to be, need to be working order and provide capacity to provide water to customers. If you have a customer that might be upsizing from a three-quarter inch meter, which is the smallest meter the city has, to say a one-inch meter, say they're going from being a small little gas station to a small brewery, and need to increase their meter size to a one-inch meter, there might be an incremental charge because a one-inch meter's obviously has a greater capacity than three-quarter inch meter. And so the whole thing here is that there needs to be a reasonable relationship between the fee and the benefit that the new connection is getting. Needs to be reasonable or rationally related. So if you look at court cases and other reports and things, they talk about the rationally related and rational nexus, meaning it needs to be reasonably, the benefit you're getting needs to be reasonably related to what you're paying for, as with anything, right? Now, what can connection fees recover? Well, they want to recover the cost of that new growth, that new facility that you're building, or you want to be able to recover the cost of these existing facilities that have capacity in them. So if you think long, long ago, existing customers today, at some point in the past, they helped build a very large system that had capacity to fit new customers. Well, as new customers come on, they pay a connection fee, which basically kind of replenishes the bank account for the money put forth by those existing customers some time ago. So there's that component of it, plus if there's new capacity being added, like the projects Chris mentioned, we need to recover a proportionate share of that as well. So they can be used to pay for debt service. And when we mean that, that when you look at these future projects, that you might debt finance these projects that are growth-related. Well, if you think about it, debt, principal, and interest, interest is a cost, it's a cost to the project. So you can include that if you wish, you're not required to, but some utilities wish to include the debt service because they want to make sure they're recovering that cost within our connection fee. That's more of a policy decision. And it can help keep user rates low. It may keep user rates low, there's a number of factors there, but the fact is, if you have connection fees that are set properly, over time, you're going to recover the cost of that growth-related projects, and that way, the existing user fees aren't having to pay for that, over time. And what that does is helps balance the equity between new and existing customers. New customers come on, they pay their connection fee, it helps pay for that portion of growth, and over time, you recoup that growth-related portion of costs, helping keep the user rates low, that way existing rate payers aren't paying for new capacity again that they paid for initially back in the day. And like I mentioned, that when a customer buys into the system with existing and new capacity, that buying into the backbone of the system, those large, large facilities that provide service. So there's some connection fee industry best practices. Obviously, you need to be compliant with any sort of state statutes or any sort of legal cases that might have precedence here. There are statutes for the state of Oklahoma, and they're listed here. Again, it gets back to that reasonably related, the rational nexus, the benefit versus the cost, and it's assessed in proportion to the impact. And key point here is that it's not used to fund repairs. So you're collecting connection fees, and let's say your user charges are not high enough, and you start using these connection fees to pay for that 12-inch main replacement out on Main Street. That's what you're not supposed to be dealing with it, and that's, that can get some legal challenge. So other best practices, obviously, you want to base it off of some sort of cost basis rather than just some estimate out of the air. So what we do is we look at the, your existing facilities and the cost, the cost to put them in when they were originally put in service, we try to estimate what's today's value of those existing major facilities. And when we look forward to these expansion projects, what's the probable cost of these well projects augmentation? So we try to put together as reasonable estimates as possible using cost indices, asset data from the balance sheet, to help estimate what's the cost or value of the existing facilities. For future expansion facilities, there's typically a good engineering probable cost document that we would go off of, or a master plan document that would be used. And so it's, the fee needs to be assessed in a non-discriminatory manner. That simply means you need to have a public schedule showing that a three-quarter inch meter is $1,000, and that meaning that if you're a new customer, you pay $1,000, you have a three-quarter inch meter, if you're a new customer, you pay $1,000 for a three-quarter inch meter. Doesn't mean that you can't have special circumstances where a new customer, like a bottling company comes in and has very unique demands. Usually, cities will have a disclaimer in their, or in their municipal code saying, "And we're going to look at that specifically for those odd customers or unusual customers." Now, the City of Norman also has something in your municipal code about how often you should be reviewing this, and it's every two years. So the last time this was reviewed in 2015, so looking at it now is a perfect time to do so. And this is in section 21-107 under using charges. Okay, so we've got the connection fee best practices, we've got a basic definition of the connection fees, we've got a basic look at the different capital projects, expansion projects, I'll kind of dive into some of the numbers here. Your existing fee schedule is this, it's based off water meter size, which is very common, and it's a very common structure because it's easy to understand, developers can follow relatively easily, there's not a special calculation, it is what it is. A one-inch meter is $1,670. It goes all the way up to a six-inch, and maybe an eight-inch and greater might be specifically addressed on an as-needed basis. So, Chris mentioned some alternatives that we came up with for these fees, and we've got your existing fee at $1,000, and we have three alternatives that we've looked at. And these three alternatives, the cost of these that we're going to show, is not just the cost of this future project, but in order to make that future project useful to anybody, it needs to be part of the entire system. So these fees are again, based on the entire system, just a different future project that's included. So, one is augmentation, and this has, this is the Lake Thunderbird augmentation. Number two is the personal, the additional wholesale water from Oklahoma City, and this is correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but in lieu of new wells and building additional capacity, purchasing additional wholesale water from Oklahoma City, Ocwen. And drill, install wells at Garber Wellington, and I'm sure that's been discussed in other meetings. So, those are the three alternatives. They all add about the same capacity, but they all yield different results. So here's your existing fee at the top here, $1,000, I put a space in there for the other ones. We've got alternative one augmentation, that's, will give you the highest fee, $3,180. And then the OKC water is $2,010, and that's a little bit lower because again, we're not building as much infrastructure, future infrastructure, we're just purchasing additional water, which might require some additional, you know, infrastructure somehow that may not be as growth-related. And then the wells, that's installing new wells to get to 3 MGD, and that's slightly more expensive than the OKC one. So those are the three alternatives we evaluated, and we followed, we followed those principles of ration-related, backbone facilities, growth-related, the value of facilities, and the benefit they're getting. All of those bullets I pointed out earlier, that's how we went about developing these So here's a water and wastewater connection fee survey. Now, surveys are great for kind of a point in time, or one data point, but every utility here has a lot of different things going on that are nothing like the City of Norman. As you may know, that a lot of, each water and wastewater utility is very unique in their situation, water supply, soils, all that sort of thing. So this is always to be taken with a little bit of grain of salt, but at least it gives one data point of where the city's at with their connection fee. Now, Norman, now we were just looking at water, but wastewater's on here as well. So Norman, $1,000 is the light blue, water's the light blue. The darker blue there, gray, is wastewater, and you can see that wastewater is a much bigger bar than many other communities. So that's because there are two components to the City of Norman's wastewater fee. One is the connection fee, and two is an excise tax charge, if I get that terminology right, that's a separate fee on top of the connection fee, so it's two components. Not too familiar with a lot of utilities that have two components like that, they might have two components in terms of a collection system fee and a treatment plant fee, but this is a little bit different here. So, what's driving Norman's to go further up the line here is a lot to do with that excise tax fee. All right, so I'm going to stop real quick on the connection fees and ask if there's any questions.
Councilmember Hall.
I just have a question about how you chose the other municipalities to compare us to.
That's a good question, and what we did is we, we've worked with other communities in, you know, Oklahoma and Texas area, and we tried to pick ones that were obviously reasonably close, that were your peers, your neighbors, and we wanted to benchmark that against some other larger utilities that are, you know, known within the industry of that they have best practices. So we wanted to pull on utilities that also had the best practices, similar to the City of Norman. Again, you know, obviously Albuquerque's in a much different situation than the City of Norman, but they regularly update their fees, and it's, and some of these other ones do as well, as a regular schedule and things, so really, other than that, it was, you know, we pulled from a whole list and just narrowed it down to this.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that you really did look at this from a pure and a benchmark point of view. So which municipalities on this list would you consider having best practices?
Well, I know that we actually do some work with Austin, and they update, when I say best practices, I'm talking about finance and making sure just things are updated, not so much engineering work, but, you know, Austin regularly updates their reviews and updates their fees. Colorado Springs does, Fort Worth does, a lot, in Texas, a lot of Texas utilities are required to do that frequently. And it's just based on what some other communities we've worked with, we talked about which ones to include locally here around the area. Now, a lot of, a lot of communities within this area don't have connection fees, or it's extremely hard to find them on their website. So, you know, there's not, we would include more in the area, but a lot of them do not have, or they're not quite the same as what the connection fees are that we're talking about today.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Holman.
Chris, might explain to everybody the difference between the excise fee and the connection fees, as far as what do they do in our utility? What do they, what do they both pay for the exact same things, is there a different purpose for both of them?
Yeah, they're, they're for new growth.
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay. And the excise tax is a voter-approved?
Excise tax, yes, it was voter-approved. It actually was brought to us from the developers back in 2000, 2001, when we all got together and came up with this formula, and it was actually voted on a little larger than we thought they were going to bring forward, so.
Okay, so that's...
$2 a square foot.
And that's, and that fee is, as he was explaining, is pretty good, is an explanation for why our bar there is so much larger than others?
Yes.
And why our total is larger than some others? Because it looks like, just water alone, we're actually one of the lowest connection fees.
That's right.
Yeah. So, I also noticed that some of these cities that don't have very high wastewater connection fees don't have wastewater treatment plants either, or they use another cities, or they don't have a water treatment plant, like Moore doesn't have one, they use so-called cities, so.
They might be off wells instead of...
Right.
Yeah, so there's a...
A lot of factors, yeah.
Right. But it at least is a starting point for having a discussion about it certainly.
Councilor Peacock.
Yeah, real quick, a follow-up to that, do, in your opinion, do you think that wastewater excise tax makes us non-competitive with other communities, or is it still a level playing field?
You know, I try that one, I, I mean, I, it is larger, and it looks, you know, when I do the rate increase for our customers, that's one of the things I look at, is are we getting out of tilt? Are we higher than all of our cities or in this area? It's just, it's kind of a feedback.
Sure, sure.
And when you look at that one, it looks a little large to me.
It jumps out, but I mean, it sounds like there's some underlying factors to why it is that way, I just, you know, in the grand scheme of things, is it...
Yeah, but if we just look at water, the water connection fee is justifiably, could go bigger.
Right, okay. That makes sense. I got one other question real quick. When did the City of Norman start collecting impact fees, or connection fees?
Excise tax.
Connection fees.
Oh, a long time ago, I don't...
I think they represent in his last, like in the article in 1986.
86, yeah.
86, okay.
Way back.
Yep, okay.
City Manager Kyle.
Quick question, will we have a slide, because we talk about balance?
Yes.
So this is what it looks like on the, on the impact side. If we add the fee side to it, do we look like we're still about in the middle of the, of the list? I don't know if that's a slide coming up, but that's just a point of curiosity, because I believe heavily in that concept of balancing the burden on new development to make sure we have affordable housing available versus the, the user fees. And if we were to combine all of our user fees and all of our impact fees and did the same for them, would we be about the same spot on that graph?
So I don't think we made a separate slide, but this one right here, you would just add, if, you know, for the 2,000, for the wells in the Oklahoma City, that 4,725, that goes to 5,725, and if we went with the augmentation up to that maximum amount, it goes to 6,725, because it's up in the 3,000 connection fee. So that's why we kind of wanted to bring this to you, and it's, I don't think, and the other thing on the augmentation is, we have a lot of things, a lot of boxes to check to make that happen and become a reality. So is it fair that you charge the connection fees at the 3,000 rate when I'm not for sure I can get there? If something happens wrong, we might not make it there, we're going to try, because it's the most sustainable and we, we chose that option. But then, if you could get to wherever one needs to get, to supply us through 2,060 with one of these other methods, the 2,000 seems to be something in the interim, the medium, and then wait for the 3,000 until we get further down the road to make sure augmentation is going to become a reality. So, just a, just a thought, I mean, it's food for thought.
My, my fear with that is, I mean, I want us to be in the best position 100 years from now, and if that's laying the groundwork right now, then why wouldn't we do it? Because I don't think it'll get any cheaper, but I get what you're saying, I mean, it's still somewhat new, we're the first in the state to pilot this program, but it is what I think is most sustainable, like you said. So is there a downside to waiting?
For the fee?
For the augmented?
What do you mean?
Well, yeah, moving forward with the fee and really starting to move that program forward, because I know we've gotten grants, and we're studying, and that's awesome.
Yes.
But this is a key part of, I think, our sustainability in terms of a long-term water supply.
We were asking Todd, and I'll let him answer, if we started charging the $3,000 connection fee, and then it comes to a point where we can't get that, and what was, what was your answer to that?
Well, you'd want to reevaluate the fee to find out whether there is a difference with the augmentation version versus an alternative that you would come up with and find out whether that fee would be lower or higher, and then follow a policy decision on how to, how to address that, that delta.
Councilmember Studley.
So just to kind of reiterate what...
So just to kind of reiterate what council, or sorry, what Mayor Clark was saying. I agree that this is something, if we're, if we're going to look into the future, let's look at long-term future. And I, and I think that that's a system that will sustain us long-term. My question is though, where do you see, why would we, I guess, where's the stop? You said if we have to stop and pivot, is it just that people won't pay the connection fees?
No.
Or is it being able to even do it?
Even be able to do it. We share the lake with Dell City, Midwest City. So they have to be in agreement before we're gonna be able to do this. So we're, we have three Midwest City, two Dell City members, and three Norman members on a citizens advisory committee. And we're letting them watch over our shoulders on this reuse pilot. So they feel comfortable and they see it as an opportunity. So hopefully they will be with us. The other piece is, is we're trying to get the phosphorus and nitrogen very low before we put it back in the lake. But our lake is impaired for chlorophyll A. It's at 30. It needs to be at a 10 micrograms per liter or less. So stormwater, folks, that's where we're kinda tied to stormwater. More Oklahoma City and Norman all discharge into the lake. They need to lower the, the non-point discharges from yards and neighborhoods going to the lake to try to get the algae, the chlorophyll A counts down. So we're thinking, we might need to spend some of our utility money to help them build a wetlands or something to reduce phosphorus and nitrogen out of those easy yards. That's easier to get it. And then it might leave me room to put in my .1 phosphorus that I'm doing in our, in our reuse pilot. You see, I gotta make room, because right now, if I ask DEQ, can I put more phosphorus in the lake? They're kinda like, it's already impaired. I don't know, I'm gonna let you do that. But if I could reduce it.
So it's not just a voting thing, it's also.
Some science.
Science, okay.
So we, we have, I mean, we have hurdles. It's a, it's a tall order. It's not a gimme.
Okay, Councilmember Foreman?
And this might be what you just answered for her, but when you said, if I can't get that referring to the 3,000, is that what you meant, like getting the other people on board, not just taking it to the public?
Not the money.
But prior to even getting to that point?
Exactly, exactly.
That was my question.
Councilmember Holman?
I think Councilmember Lynn's had his hand up for a while.
Oh, Councilmember Lynn?
I think, looking at this, and this, I don't know if this is what Darryl was asking, but for me, with another slide, if you put, like, usage fees right next to this, where do we fall on that? Because it might be a big upfront, but we fall way down on the usage fees, I would guess.
We do have that slide at the end.
Oh, is it coming up then?
Yes, we do have that one.
I should just.
No.
My brain would like to see them side by side, so I'll get it here.
Okay, Councilmember Holman?
Yeah. So before, I think there wasn't even state law that allowed us to even explore the option. But that has changed. So there has been a major hurdle crossed in recent years to even get down this path of reuse. And when we were doing this strategic water supply plan in 2012 and 13, the reason why we picked the augmentation option was, the committee that I was serving on at the time, was because of uncertainty about wells and how many and where we could drill them, if the aquifer could support the projected population growth of Norman by 2060. And then the OKC was just a matter of resource security or control that if we become, the more of a customer we become of Oklahoma City, the more at the mercy we become of their government, their city council. If anything happened in Oklahoma City, they would supply their customers first, obviously, and we would be shut off if there was some sort of.
I don't think they would do that. If we were one of their major customers, they, they try to, they wanna supply and all of us, because they wanna get their revenues.
That was kind of our feeling of those. Yeah, we didn't wanna ever be in a situation where Norman is at the mercy of some other city when it comes to water resources. And so the augmentation was more expensive, but had, as the mayor mentioned, the more long-term sustainability and allow our community to have more control over that resource.
And the thing too, is we're looking at, is their, their water rates right now are like $2.44 a thousand, I believe it is. And we're making water at our water plant, our total water. And it's getting up to their 235, 240 a thousand. So it's not, they're not a lot more for that same piece of water. And then the other thing we like is having a mixed portfolio of supply. We love having a little bit of Oklahoma City, little wells, and a little lake. Has been very nice when one or two go down, as we saw in the snow. It's nice to have one more that we still stand on and keep water going.
Right. And I would say too, that in my experience with this process, Midwest City and Dell City, in my opinion anyway, are more comfortable with this today than they were a few years ago. They seem, a few years ago, I think they were very, both very opposed, and really just didn't even wanna talk about it. You know, their communities haven't experienced the same type of growth as Norman. I don't know that their demand for new water resource is, I don't know if they even have a demand for new water resource. So it's not a real pressing issue for their communities to bring reuse to Lake Thunderbird like it is for us, since we're so much larger than they are.
I'd like to add a piece to that too, is the lake, the firm yield of the lake, they just reevaluated the firm yield, and they lowered it. So the three cities are currently using over the firm yield. And we didn't think we were, even back as 2014 when we did the water supply plan.
Yeah.
And so with that, I think we're all becoming more educated of how it's looking for our future. I think Dell City, Midwest City might see it more as a value just for the augmentation to maybe secure the supply and get it back to what we thought we had in the first place for a firm yield.
Yeah, I agree. And because in the water supply plan, in those meetings, we did talk a lot about how Lake Thunderbird was built as a 100-year lake, where its lifetime was built as 100 years. If nothing was ever done to it, if it was never augmented, or whatever might need to be done, in 100 years, it might not be a lake anymore. It just, it gets shallower and shallower every year. It's much shallower now than it was when it was first built, I would guess. And so the idea being, if nothing's done to it, if it's not augmented, anything like that by 2060, it may not, it may not be there anymore, so.
Well, I'll commend you with that citizen commission. I've attended those meetings. And you can, they'll say how much they've learned from the process. So well done on educating people on what can seem a little funky at first, but if, if anyone watching has not been educated on impotable or potable reuse, I definitely suggest you check it out. We are trailblazers in that area. Councilmember Tortorello?
Actually, you already answered it with his question here, so I'm good. So, well, you know what? Since, explain the difference between the, the water and wastewater utility survey and the color series. So why is Norman, the, the difference between the blue and the dark blue? Why ours is, the wastewater is higher than, say like Dallas, where Dallas is more balanced? So what, how'd you get to that number?
It's, it's based off those two components, which is the connection fee, but then there's that excise tax portion. And I'm not sure how that was developed, you said by developers, but I'm not sure the basis for it.
Yeah, a community decision. We all met, First Christian Church, Anthony remembers. We had several meetings. And that's, this is what we came to as a settlement to get things going again on our wastewater system.
Okay.
They put in a sales tax that generated like 33 million to go upsize all the interceptors. They set up this excise tax to continue enlarging, you know, the plants and the lines for future growth. And, oh, $5 a month, that's right, cheeseburger a month for the maintenance to continue replacing everyone's pipes, so they don't contribute eye-to-eye, making more water go to the plant, so you don't have to build a bigger plant.
So I like that. So we're pretty much posed for growth for the next 100 years, pretty much.
Wastewater's set up nice.
Right. Okay, thank you.
As you go through a wastewater utility connection fee study, you wanna evaluate the benefit and the cost of the excise tax and the connection fee too, just like we've done with water.
Thank you for the.
Councilmember Foreman?
I don't know if this is the place to interject this question or not, but maybe we'll get to it at the end. I don't know. But what happens if we can't charge what we need to, to, you know, expand the infrastructure? How will we make up those costs? Are we getting to that, or is now a good time?
You have two pots of money, connection fees, user rates. If you don't get from this, you gotta get from this.
Do we got enough in one?
Well, we'll, we're gonna look at that and.
Rob Peter to pay Paul, okay.
We're hurting in both, actually, that's why.
Okay.
Councilmember Holman?
Yeah, I would like to see the wastewater bar broken down between how much of that is the excise.
Actually, what we've asked Todd to do is, we wanted to get through water first, and then we're gonna have him review our wastewater connection fee also, just to explain and see how it's doing also. Is it out of tilt, or is it just right on? I mean, we don't, our fund balances don't show that we have a lot of extra money left over, so it's, it's doing its job. I can't give any back, but just how is it rate?
And eventually, the connection fee is for new growth, but we are using this excise fee to replace system parts?
No, 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 it is for new growth. It's in the 322 account. It's, it gets spent just for upsizing enlarged projects.
Okay.
Just for reference, it's not shown on there, but the connection fee per sewer is 275 on this graph. So the majority of it is the excise tax. And we are basing this on a 2,500 square foot.
Connection fee is $275?
Yes.
Councilmember Studley?
Kind of piggybacking off of Foreman, are, is one of the things that you're gonna show in a future slide, the cost that it is for us to treat wastewater here? Like, what's our cost to treat it?
I don't have that, honest. I, no, I don't have that, but I can get that.
Okay. And then, what does OKC charge us for water?
$2.44 per thousand. And then plus, there's a meter fee per month. But you want treatment costs for a water reclamation facility.
And do we know, are we being charged the same as their other payers?
Yes, they have a sheet, a contract that they provide to all the people they sell water to. We can see everyone else's, it is at different rate structures. Who might help me here?
Yeah, I worked at Oklahoma City for 12 years, so all of it's based in their ordinance. And so they do cost of service studies similar to what we're doing here, and then assess how much each person should get charged. And so anybody could go pull up their municipal code and see what rates.
And they project out five years. So those show you, it usually goes up 4% to 5% a year. They, they'll show it to you. And you sign a new contract every five years. They're, they're studying their updates right now, and we're watching to see what it's gonna look like for the next five years.
And then looking at what they're doing then, and the comparison that we put on here for the 2,000, something for Oklahoma City, is that including their current study, or what you think?
We don't know their outcome yet, but it's just, it would be to go start buying more water. If we, if growth started happening and we need more water, how would we do that? And what's the cost that needs to be paid back to the people that already bought that connection up in Northwest Norman?
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think we're ready.
Sorry.
I'm gonna go back, I'm gonna go back a slide.
Don't do it.
One thing we talk about with connection fees is the maximum supportable. So what I'm showing here is a maximum supportable fee. And that means that this is the fee that we can support with data, numbers, calculations, documents, and that sort of thing. Council is free to adopt anything up to that amount and be within the statutory requirements. But anything over that could be, could be subject to challenge. So whenever there's a huge difference between the existing and proposed connection fees, many utilities might ease into that, transition into that. Just because we've shown the 3180 certainly doesn't mean that you have to adopt that full amount in year one. You can transition to kind of mitigate that, that impact to develop, and give the developers time to adjust and provide comments and whatnot.
Councilmember Holman?
Thank you. Just to be clear, because this has been a point that's come up over the years since this study first came out, or since we first, in 2015. But you're saying these are not what costs or what we need to charge for these fees. This is the maximum amount that you could say the data could support. But that's, and you're not saying to do the augmentation, we need to raise it to 3180 today?
Well, the augmentation is part of, part of the fee, is a component of the fee. And when you look at the value of this whole facilities, backbone facilities, plus this augmentation, that in total, and we look at what kind of capacity does that serve? And that gives us a unit cost. And then we can develop, that's how we came up with this fee here. So it incorporates the cost of augmentation, or any of these other ones as well. And you can choose, so in theory, if you were charged a 3180, you would recover the cost of augmentation over time from new growth, over time.
So anything less than 3180, we might not recover the 100% of what we spent, is what you're saying? Okay.
Because again, buying into the entire system, the, there's the existing part of the system we're buying into, plus this component of.
Thanks.
So I'm gonna move on to the financial plan. So we've got these connection fees, we have these alternatives. And I stress alternative, because when we talk about the financial plan, we're gonna talk about scenarios. So we had three alternatives, and we have four scenarios on the financial plan. I tried not to make that confusing, but I've called it out, so just, I'll, I'll point that out when we get to those slides. So there's a lot of steps and things we need to do. And I mentioned this very beginning with the study goals and objectives, that there's a lot of inputs that go into a cash flow of financial plan. If you think about your own financial process you go through at home, there's all sorts of things you consider, your expenses, your revenues, your salaries. So we've got our, all sorts of information. And we look at generating our revenue stream here from your user rates. We have to look at customer accounts and projected volumes and that good stuff. We have to incorporate operating expenses, your capital plan, both growth and non-growth. Those projects that are gonna be bond-funded versus cash-funded, all those sorts of things. And so we get an annual cash flow from that, but we have those bookends that we need to work with them. We have to figure out, well, how are we gonna fund this capital program? Are we funding everything from cash or debt? It's kinda like buying a car. You could buy a car for cash and have no money in your bank account, but you don't owe anybody anything. Or you could finance it 100% debt and say, I've got a lot of cash in the bank, but now I've got this obligation for the next five, six years. So it's that balance. So we're trying to look at those ends and say, well, we gotta figure out the revenue adjustment and balance those to find the optimal adjustment. And we have to meet our bond covenants, the debt service coverage ratio, or on a personal finance version, your debt to income. So when you purchase a house, you have to have the right debt to income ratio. If it's not right, then it's hard to get a good loan, right? And we have the fiscal policies and targets, your debt service coverage, your cash reserve. Now, the city has two reserves, and I'll talk about that in a moment. And those from there, we came up with our financial plan scenario one, which is based off of existing fees, the $1,000. Financial plan scenario two, which is the connection fees with augmentation, the alternative one. Financial plan scenario three with OKC water, financial plan scenario four with well water. So we have four scenarios, because we're adding in, what's the financial plan look like if we stay with the existing fees? Basically the difference. Okay. So there's a number of drivers. From a capital standpoint, Chris has mentioned them. I won't go over them in too much detail. AMI, disinfection blending, water line replacement. This is a big one in Norman, the city of Norman's not alone. Repair and replacement is a huge deal, and it's even difficult for some utilities to get on a 50-year schedule of replacement, meaning they replaced this mile of pipe, and 50 years later, they come back and replace it again, somewhere on a 100-year schedule. It's a lot more costly now to put pipes in the ground than it was 50 years ago when it was still dirt roads, and there wasn't communication lines, gas, and all of that. You know, cost of asphalt and all, so all those, a number of things are probably more expensive. And that is definitely putting upward pressure on, on user rates. If you think back to the chart I showed at the very beginning, this is probably a big component of that. Source supply acquisition, the, the augmentation wells and OKC. So our forecast period, we looked at a 10-year period. And so when we were doing this, we decide to do the connection fees, come up with these alternatives. That's great. What does that mean? It's kind of just one piece of the pie for the whole utility. So Chris and Nathan asked me to go back and say, well, let's, can we do like a high-level financial plan? Just at, you know, 50,000-foot level here, what might be impacts? What will look different on each of these alternatives? And that's what we've done. So we've got a forecast period of 10 years. We built off, there is a document in the budget that has a five-year or four-year cash flow. We've built off of that as a basis for this. Now, this, our financial plan incorporates the $4 million revenue adjustment that Chris brought to council back in July. And that equates to about a 16.7% revenue adjustment. So that means we take the existing user rate revenue, which is the service charge and the volume rate, and what's on the bill, we increase that by 16.7%, and get an additional $4 million. So all of the scenarios, the first year of increases are all the same, that $4 million. So just keep that aside for a second, we'll come back to it. Annual customer cap growth of 1.67. It ranges from 1 to 1.67. And so, you know, we're, we're looking at this, this might change with future analysis. Okay, so those two, those couple of bookends, we talked about reserves. The city's required to maintain an operating reserve according to its bond covenants, meaning you gotta have a minimum amount of money in the bank at the end of each year. And the city's using 30 days of O&amp;M. Now, when we say operating reserve, it's 30 days of O&amp;M, but there's two other items in there. You have a couple of bond issues outstanding. And according to the covenants, you gotta keep one payment aside the bank. Can't touch it, it's restricted, you can't do anything with it. It's to pay off. off the last payment, or in case maybe of an emergency. It just depends on the criteria. So when we talk about the operating reserve, we're actually looking at two components. This operating component, which is simply your operating expenses excluding depreciation, divided by 365 days times 30. And then we have those two bond reserve requirements. So that's one of those. Second reserve is a $15 million capital reserve. Now, many utilities are required to have a capital reserve based on their bond covenants. Others have it as part of a policy, or an unwritten practice of maintaining a capital reserve. It's definitely a prudent thing to do, and we'll show you in a minute, the level of annual capital improvement projects and costs that vary each year. It's wise to have that because you never know how one of those might change in any given year, which can be significant about. So we've looked at $15 million, and typically it's around, the city will try to use five-year average, but we've been a little conservative in just saying $15 million to keep the analysis simple. So we've got the operating reserve, 30 days of O&M, plus the bond reserves, plus capital. So three reserves that we need to meet. Your debt service coverage requirement per your official statement and bond covenants is 1.25 times debt service. That means your net income, revenues plus expenditures, has to be 25% greater than your annual debt service payment. Now, here's the thing. When you start issuing more debt, you get larger debt payments. It pushes the debt service coverage down, but you also have lower revenue adjustments because you're not cash financing it. Well, as you push it down, then in the next year, you may not be able to issue as more debt, so you might need to raise rates, and that might mean you need to cash finance more. So it's this circular type process we go through. Okay. We've left the revenue adjustments on three-year intervals. I know that there's a different process for the city of Norman in terms of getting rate increases, and that's going to vote, and I know there's a process involved. So to be conservative, we've looked at three-year intervals. The last increase again was in 2015, that's six years ago. So we can obviously look at scenarios, that's every two years, every five years, and that sort of thing. And state loan terms, there's a number of bond issues for some of these key projects, for some of the growth-related projects as well. We assume the 20-year term, 3% annual interest rate, and 2% issuance cost. That's fairly typical, conservative for state loans from the state and feds. So that's what we've assumed. Obviously, there might be a number of different ways you can skin that cat with looking at 10-year loans or 30-year loans, just depending on the interest rate and your credit rating. Okay, so those are some of the assumptions that we used. Let's take a look at the capital improvement program. You can see that it's lumpy. It changes each year. If it were the same every year, it'd be a lot easier to do the financial plan. But you can see there's some big jumps here in 2027, and 28, even in 23 a little bit. So you can see also, we have identified some state loans, which is the white blue bars here. So we're trying to figure, how do we make this smooth with the revenue, with cash financing and state loans? So this was, this is part of the challenge. Okay, so if we had a financial plan in which we did nothing, we didn't increase, provide any revenue adjustments on user charge revenues, we did not change the connection fee revenues, this is what we'd look like. So the blue line is your user rate revenues, miscellaneous operating revenues, and the capital surcharge revenue, and that sort of thing. And you can see that we've got a light blue here, which is the O&M expense, our debt service is gray, and we have some, we have some inner-city transfers, and this is our total capital, both what's rate and loan funded, but here we're showing just the total capital program. You can see that obviously we'd be deficient, we would not be able to fund a majority of our capital. We know this is not a likely case, but just shows the magnitude that the capital improvement program plays in the role of financial planning. So I'm not going to go over all four scenarios, because at the end of the day, we want, they all kind of look the same from a graphical standpoint. So we looked at scenario one, which is just based off of existing fees, just to keep it simple. And this is what we want the financial plan to look like. So in all the examples, because we did rate increases in the same years, it's going to be a variation of this. But for the existing fees, what we've done here is we're going to, we're going to do revenue adjustments in fiscal year '23, '26, and '29, I believe. And so the outcome's this. We've got the blue line here that's going up in kind of, in chunks there, because we're doing it every couple of years. And we've got our same color coding here, O&M expense, debt service, transfers, and capital. Oh, wait a minute. Why is the capital so much lower than it was here? What's going on? Why is it lower? Well, this is just the cash-funded portion of capital. We've kind of taken the loans out and put the loan-funded projects over here, they zero out, so we're just showing what needs to be funded through rates. And what's interesting here is, when you look at this, what it's telling us is that the blue line is recovering our expenditures each year. In the years where the blue line is greater than the bar, that means we're kind of building up some reserves. In the years where the bar is above the blue line, we're drawing down reserves. And it's not, it's not uncommon to want to build up reserves because you might need to build those up in order to fund a future project, and just meet your targets. So here in '25 and '26, in theory, we're building up reserves only to draw them down in this year. It helps keep the revenue adjustment slow. And this last year, what's key here is that the revenues are, you've got that gap between the blue bar and, I'm sorry, the bar and the blue line. We're generating a surplus, but it's not just for no reason at all. So when we come here, we're just meeting our target reserves at the end of the study period. So this right here, the blue bars are ending balance each year. You can see that it just kind of goes up and down. That's part of the capital program, being a lot of still cash-funded projects, we're drawing up, drawing down. We have our operating reserve here, that's the absolute minimum we want to meet. The capital reserve, I don't believe is part of covenants, but, so we are trying to get to meeting the full reserves, both operating and capital. We do that in the last year, and that's why we're building up a little bit of a surplus in that last year, is to get us over the finish line here. And what that does is you have two things going on. Not only are you meeting the target reserves, but now you've got an annual surplus, meaning your revenues are meeting your expenditures. You're self-sufficient, and that you're set up for the next 10 years to start another capital program and be ahead of the game, proact with those replacements and other projects. So I'll stop here, see if there's any questions on the financial plan, then I'll show you the results.
Councilor Schuler?
On the last slide, how much are we in, are we assuming that we're increasing our rates to get, every three years, to get to in those adjustments?
I'll show you on the next slide.
Okay.
All right, so we talked about the increases, percentage increases, and the percentage increases are some pretty big bumps, above 10%. It really doesn't give you anyone context of like, well, 30%, what is that? So what we've done for each scenario, at the different periods of time when we increased the rates, we wanted to show, what's the impact to a typical single-family bill? How many dollars per month are they going to be paying more? Because that's, at the end of the day, that's really what the customer's going to want to know. How much more do I need to pay? So this is what we have. We've got the four scenarios here, we've got existing fees, scenario two, which is alternative one, so on and so forth. And you can see that we've got our fiscal year '22, which is where we're at today under the existing rates, and then we've got this $4 million adjustment, a 16.7% increase in '23, then bumps in '26 and '29. You can see they're all a little bit different, and it's all just based off of the timing of what projects are cash or bond financed, and whether, for example, with the Oklahoma City water, you don't need augmentation, so that's not part of the equation. So that's going to change the balance. So let's look here at the differences here. On the existing fees, if you were to adopt the proposal that Chris had brought forward back in July of about $4 million, it would be about a $3.56 increase per bill per month. That's based off 5,000 gallons. Of course, that's going to vary based on each person's individual monthly usage, but on average, $5.43 for the next jump, and then $6.48. So there are some bigger increases there, and we'll compare these to these other ones here. Augmentation and scenario three, scenario four, and we might ask ourselves, wait a minute, why is augmentation kind of lower than OKC? Well, we're bond financing a lot of the augmentation, and plus it's got a higher connection fee. So we're able to get more money from the growth rate. So there's a lot of things going on here with these numbers, and we can certainly come back to and provide some more detailed analysis. We can sharpen our pencils on some certain things, but we just want to give you an idea of the complexity of what we're looking at, that there's a lot of moving parts, and it's not just connection fees. It affects a lot of the things, deciding on how to bond, and whether it needs to go for grants, and that sort of thing, and these increases here. So this concludes of all of our analysis, when we look at the connection fee alternatives and the financial plan scenarios. These are preliminary results. I mean, these are very, this is a very high-level look. We could certainly dive down deeper into.
And we did it different. I want to add that, you know, the 3.56, we were noticing, he just took it across the board, but in the summer, when I came to you, I actually, mine would have been $7, because I put two in the base fee, and then I raised it a dollar for that first zero to 5,000. So mine would have been seven. And from my perspective, you want it, you like it in the base fee, so you know you get it, so you make sure you make your loan payments. If you put it all in the over 20,000, you might change people's usage patterns, and you don't get the money to pay the things you've built, you've got loans on. So it's a, it's a, I would take any input. We can try any scenario, but it's a balancing act, where you, how you put the money in there.
Councilor Holman?
Yes, so you're, are saying you're asking for a $7 a month increase from what people are paying now?
Just on the 5,000 gallon usage?
Yeah.
The proposal I showed you in the summer, and I can bring that to you again, but I had put $2 in the base fee, and then a dollar on that zero to 5,000 tier. And that would have been, if he would have calculated that, it would have been $7 in that 23 across the board.
Is what we will be asking voters?
That's what I had proposed. But again, kind of just letting you guys see the connection fees, and then maybe I bring something forward that, and I'll put it out there, and you say yes or no, let's adjust this this way, or?
I kind of feel like if we don't put something in connection fees, and then go put everything on our residents, it's not going to go over well.
Right.
So, Councilor Foreman?
I was just going to say that the, what's $3,180 is like the legal high that we can charge for connection. That's actually what it costs, and I want people to hear this. This is what it actually costs to fund it. And so I do think that to connect to the new development, that needs to be put on the developers, and I will vote strongly against anything that is a penny less. That's just my opinion. I'm just putting it out there for the universe to know. But that is, I mean, that's just, that's how much it costs. So I don't know why we would consider charging anything less, if that's what it takes to maintain the infrastructure going forward. Like, I don't think we need to be talking about 2,000, if it's 3,100, we need to be talking about 3,100, so that we're not shifting. So, I mean, for me, I could do $14 more, you know, I could do $24, like so much more. But so many of our residents cannot, and so I think that we need to shift as much as we can on the people who are going to be collecting a lot of money once they connect to us, than on our tax-paying residents.
Totally. Your decision, and just, what's Oklahoma City's estimated impact, what they come up with, like?
I think.
Three or four thousand?
Six thousand, and then they redid it, and it was about 5,100. But they elected to still charge just a thousand, so.
They stay low, that's their choice, but that's up to the councils. So totally your choice, and you have that, whatever you say. I mean, it's more money for the water revenue, so we're in, but.
And depending on how you want to finance those augmentation projects with debt, if you want to include the debt service coverage or the interest cost, that would certainly... The challenge with doing that is sometimes the interest costs become 50% of the, of the fee, because interest over 20 years prior. So that, you know, we didn't include debt carrying cost, that was cost of the project, but that's more conservative approach. But certainly, that's other communities do that, but you are, you know, raising question in whether that would be appropriate.
Councilor Schuler?
Can you remind us, I know we had this conversation back in the summer about where most residents fall in the amount that they're using. And so this is based on, you know, 5,000 gallons of usage, but I think most customers are not at that.
73% of the bills in a year that go out are in the 5,000 gallon or less.
Right.
89% of the bills that go out throughout the year are 10,000 gallons or less. That's of the bills. So like Chris Mattingly? You know, nine of my bills in a year are low, but those three summer months, they would be over this, right?
And then, I know that we're talking about kind of these four scenarios. Is there, you know, as I was listening to the presentation, are there, this complicates things, I think, for us as we think about this, but are there any scenarios that combine augmentation, buying water from OKC, and bringing different wells online? I mean, because we're currently piloting a program with augmentation, we're currently purchasing water from OKC, we have wells. So what does that look like? Is there a calculation for that?
Combined? We really didn't do that, but I know as we...
But can we?
Yeah, as we go forward, we're, that's going to be how I actually get you, get water for the next, whoever wants to come to Norman. We're bumping up against our maximum right now on our annual, annual output. Actually, our peak, we can handle peaks on daily peaks. We're pretty good there, but our annual allocations for the lake, that is the one that's, we're unusual that Norman doesn't have the annual allocation. Most cities don't see that, so.
Maybe just real quick, the alternate one, it includes us continuing as wells as we are, and Oklahoma City as we are, and then adds augmentation.
Okay.
And the difference is, you know, scenario two, scenario three is, we continue that same way and then add OKC, but no augmentation.
Got it. And so just, we would increase the amount of money that we're, or water that we're purchasing from OKC in scenario three. So everything else holds consistent, what we're currently doing?
Yes.
And then what increase in other areas?
And then just maybe one quick thing on scenario three and OKC. We kept them as apples to apples for, you know, we're getting three MGD peak capacity, so that way we could compare them evenly when we did the connection fees. But then, one of the nice things about scenarios three and four are, those can be somewhat incremental, whereas the augmentation option is kind of like, you have to build the whole thing, or you don't see any benefit. Whereas you could go build one well, you could slightly increase a take from Oklahoma City. Just, those are, just want to kind of provide those, because those are tools available.
Right.
Doesn't mean you have to go solely one, two, or three, just options available.
Operationally, Oklahoma City is the easiest. You just, you just dial up and start, we can, our vault will take up to five or six MGD. We're currently buying one MGD, so we could go get four or five additional MGD just by saying we want it. Wells, you saw we just drilled the 10 wells, it was $12 million. Actually drilled nine, and they were 11, but 12 million for 3 million gallons of well. And you could maybe go build, drill a well a year, or well every two years, you know. So again, you can stagger up. The augmentation is, we're all in, $100 million to get the first 3 million gallons out of it. That's, it's just, it's the good one, we're going for it, but it's a tough one. So I'm just trying to be clear on that, transparent.
Councilor Studley?
So I want to just reiterate what Councilmember Foreman was saying in regards to, you know, pushing some of those fees to, and the connection fee versus our residents. And I'm curious, you had said on your initial presentation this summer, that it was $7 across the board that was being pushed to our customers. Why did you not include?
Let me, let me just show you, yeah, because I'm...
Do you have that slide in, like, dance?
But in that $7, is, did that include you?
It wasn't $7 flat. It's just, I took a stab at it the first, and put $2 on the base, I put a dollar in, yeah, here. This is what I showed you guys.
What I'm saying is, did you, did you not calculate in this scenario a rate increase for the connection fee?
No. So here's what I did.
All to resident here?
Yes, this one I based off because the AMI is for today's meters. It's not getting more water. The disinfection is for today's well field, not getting any additional water. And the third, replacing pipes that are already here, not getting any more water. So this next rate increase that I had come to you on summer is really for today's folks. It's not to go get additional water, which I think the connection fee is going to be for the next piece of water. The only reason we're bringing the connection fee up also is because while we're looking at it, usually we, the last time we did the rate increase, we got a little bit, we did up the connection fees, and we said, that's fair, you know, growth, you guys up your piece. And then today's residents, our customers, you up your piece. And so we're all pitching in together, because water needs more money, so we have a healthy supply. So it's kind of a everyone pitch in kind of attitude. That's kind of what we're coming with this. Connection fee only for additional water, but those really just cover the topics I said for today's folks, for today's customers.
Councilor Lynn?
I might be a little different on this, I probably disagree with my colleagues, but maybe with these higher connection fees, are we going to deter people from wanting to develop here?
That's, that's a planning and I need more, I want input on that, that's, it's a tough decision.
I mean, if they can go do it and they save millions of dollars by developing in neighboring cities instead of coming to Norman, I don't see that as benefiting anybody. And while, the thing is that we already have some of the lowest rates in cities around. So it wouldn't hurt us to increase. You got to look at this, you have your cell phone, you have your internet, you have whatever knickknacks you have at your house that you spend tons of money on each month, and that's, that's not just normal people, that's everybody. Everybody has stuff that they spend money on. And you're looking at what your proposal is, a value mill from McDonald's each month. His proposal's even lower. And you're talking about life, sustaining life, when the most important things that we have is our water and to be able to increase it, these are minimal fee increases. And me, preferably, I would rather just have it on the fee side than just gouging on the connection side. Because who does that get passed on to? The developers don't pay for that, they pass that right on to whoever's moving in. So you're going to, if you want more affordable housing in Norman, it's going to come at a cost. Those costs, those aren't paid out of the developer pockets, those go straight to the end user. So, I mean, you can make circular argument with it. They're, they're not paying for it, that house is going to be more expensive, that business property is going to be more expensive. Whatever it is, I think you should pay for what you use, kick in a little bit more, especially when we have one of the lowest rates around anyhow.
That speaks to this slide, I believe. 89% of the bills are 10,000 or less. Kimberly from our accounting office did this when we did our rate reviews, our, our fund reviews back in the spring. And Norman was currently, on this comparison, we use different cities, I didn't pick the ones Todd did, but we, this is the ones we came up with, we were the lowest. And then our proposed, this increase I put on there would put us still what, second or third lowest?
But our water and trash bill and wastewater all come in one bill.
Yes.
So even though we're low on water, we're still high on waste, so.
But this is, I think this is one that's inclusive of all.
All, these are all three. This is your water sewer and trash.
City manager piles, is this the one you were wanting to see?
Yes.
Yeah.
No, well, if, if you took our connection fees.
Okay.
Plus our user fees.
Well, we'll have to create that one.
Yeah, that's, that's, I was asking for the same thing that he was.
But note that those are, those are different in time charges. The connection's just the one time and then the user.
Yeah, but like if we're up here on connection fees, which we're up a little bit higher on the connection fees, but we're way down here on the user fees compared to those same cities or whatever, we kind of still probably average out to fall down of what you get altogether.
Councilor Holman?
Thanks. I, there is some, there's definitely some validity to that statement that higher connection fee isn't going, the developer isn't paying that. So any motivation to make developers pay their own way, it's, it's the homeowner, the first time homeowner that buys the house that is paying that fee. So there is some validity in there, but it is a, something that I think all cities and what we've been dealing with is going back and forth between, okay, we have the highest fees for connection, but what is the cost? If that's the cost of it, all these other cities are just subsidizing the growth. And that's what we keep hearing in Norman is, we don't want to subsidize growth, we don't want to pay for it, it needs to pay its own way. And what we've seen is that cities like Oklahoma City know that their connections cost a whole lot more than what they're charging for it, and they've made the choice that we're, we're okay with subsidizing that so that we can get the growth. And Oklahoma City has had a lot of growth, as you can see in the census data, but if you also look at that same data, we may have the highest connection fee, but we had more than double the total population growth of Moore, more than double. They had 7,000, we had almost 20,000. We had more population total growth than Edmund, than Broken Arrow, than Lawton. Tulsa and Oklahoma City were the only two cities in the state that had a larger population growth than Norman in the last 10 years, and Tulsa only had 5,000 more than we did in growth. We almost grew by more people in the last 10 years than the city of Tulsa, which has 400,000 people, and we have 130. So I can definitely see that having a higher connection fee, I don't want to necessarily punish people that want to move to Norman in the spirit of making developers pay for it, but I also can sit there and say, well, the connection fees haven't, being higher than everywhere else, haven't slowed growth in Norman, our population growth. People moving to Norman seem to, seem to not care that Moore is a lot less and they're still moving to Norman anyway. They're still building stuff everywhere, if you drive around Norman, there's something under construction. And so I, I see both sides of this, but I do agree that it's really a community, you know, what, what is our priority or do we want to, do we want growth so much that we're willing to not charge the amount it costs to support the infrastructure? Or do we want to charge the full amount and maybe that makes us a little less attractive to some folks? So that's something I think as a community, you've really got to figure out what we want to do. And from my perspective, I think what I've heard mostly is that whatever it costs to supply that or provide it is what we need to recoup. And so whether it's through user fees or connection fees, but I like the balanced approach, figuring out a way that we're not, because I don't want our existing customers to have to pay more for new growth, but I don't want new residents of Norman to have to bear the whole cost of.
That's what I touched on earlier and I'll say it again, if we're going to sit here and say, hey, it's six years, we need a water rate increase, we didn't raise connection fees though, it's all going to be, I mean, even if it's not all on them based on what you shared, perception is everything. And so I, I want this to pass, we need this to pass, we budgeted for this to pass. So let's keep that in mind as well. Councilor Schuler and then Foreman?
Yeah, my comments were pretty spot on to what Councilwoman Holman and what you Mayor Clark are saying. I think that it's really important that we have a balanced approach to thinking about, you know, what our current users are paying and how we think about that fee structure and what, what we're doing with connection fees. And to your point, Councilwoman Berlin, I think that you're right, there, there is a point to be made that those connection fees are going to be passed on to whoever is purchasing that home and so, but I think that it's really important that current users are not always the ones who have to build the capacity for that growth. I think that it's important for the new growth to also pitch in, and so if you are purchasing a home, you are creating a higher demand on the, the capacity that we need for our water supply. And I think that there should be a fee associated with that to make sure that we've got and we can invest in these, these upgrades for capacity and for our capital, as was kind of explained during the presentation. So I think we have to tie these two increases together, and I don't think that we can do one without the other. And as we always continue to look at this, it's not going to be a conversation that is final and finished, it's going to be an ongoing conversation that we have every three years is what we're kind of hearing is, is kind of a best practice. And so we're going to be fighting or arguing about what this looks like and what, what's the best thing. So this does need to pass, I think we need to think about, you know, all of these things. I think AMI is going to be huge for Norman and, you know, I think we need to look at our connection fees next. They need to be tied together.
Councilor Foreman?
So I completely disagree with everyone. Pause for shock. So the developers pay this fee one time, and if they pass some of it on to the first time home buyer, then so be it. But the problem is, is that we're building all these homes that are coming up at the same time and they all have an end of life at the same time. So when we're 20, 25 years in, all their roofs and blah, blah, blah. Anyway, but the infrastructure for connection, that has the same end of life to all these things. So all this maintenance then has to be done all at the same time. So the developer pays this fee one time, but it's the taxpayers that are paying for it for years to come. So I think that's something we need to consider, that the developers need to pay more because we are paying for this forever. So right now in the last finance committee meeting that we had, we talked about the services that we're going to have to cut taxpayer dollars to pay a million dollar asbestos thing. I mean, things happen and if we don't have the funds there available, ready to go, then services get cut to the residents on different things. And so I think if we have the appropriate connectivity fees, then these are things that we won't have to worry about cutting services for. So take me home, Chris Mattingly, charge them everything, give you all the money you need, because these new developments are going to expire, they're going to need maintenance all at the same time, all these different areas, and it's us who have to pay for it years down the road versus the one time fee that they have to charge, so.
I don't think we're disagreeing with you.
I'm saying charge them all. Stick it.
All right.
I have strong feelings about this.
Any other comments? What are the next steps?
Exactly. What would you like to see for me? Would you like me to bring you a couple of options, maybe have Todd draw up an option? This was mine and Ken, Ken kind of helped me start this one, this is what we came to. But would you like three or four to pick from or did, one time you, you talked about maybe having 2% increases per year or something, I mean.
That's what I dare to dream about.
We, we tried that in 2010, we did a three tier kind of to let everyone know what's coming and just get a little bit this first year, a little bit more the second year, but that didn't pass and, or I think we maybe even changed it the last, but it, it didn't go over as well as I thought it would, but I'm open. I mean, I'm, you, tell me what you want me to bring you and I'd like to bring that and then start setting up communication for the community to know, here's what we're going to be voting on in April and start that process of transparency.
And as a reminder, we have to have first and second reading by January, we don't have until April to decide this.
Right.
No, we currently have this topic scheduled for the first Tuesday in December for Chris to bring back.
Okay.
The proposal, so that's why he's needing the input. And then if it has to be tweaked again, it'll come back to the conference on the 14th, but then you won't meet again until January. So that's your two tropes.
All right, I know, I'd like to see a combination of both just because I, I don't think I can in good conscience go to, based on all the comments and also we're investing in potentially a really long-term water supply with those funds as well. So I, I personally would like to see a combination. Councilor Studley?
Is the presentation we not just saw by Todd, a combination of that where it showed a smaller rate increase over an incremental time period and, and also an increase in the connection fee? So that to me was very balanced, where like you said, we're sharing that between the developers as well as the residents. And I feel like his presentation showed a slower increase for the residents, which is more digestible for me and I feel like for a lot of other people, even though I know it's as cheap as a, a value mill. Councilmember Lynn, some people can't even afford a value mill, they afford 25 cent pack of ramen noodles and that's their dinner. So a $5 increase or a $7 increase like that is pretty detrimental to some people. So I really like the fact that his kind of spread that out over a period of time and then also shared the connection fee increase. So I, I think what he presented was very well balanced personally.
Okay. Any other feedback? Councilmember Lynn?
I know we talked about it, but I don't know the pulse on it, that if there's any way that we get it where we could do, if there was a ceiling of what city council could vote on for increases without taking them to the voters.
That's a charter amendment, which we were going to vote on in the relatively near future and then it got bumped because of the state legislature taking away elections. So that's still on the table, but this will come first.
Okay, okay.
Councilor Holman?
I, I agree, I do want to see, because this, you said this one's just user rate increase, this wouldn't reflect if we, this may not, may not need to be, the base fee may not need to be $2 increased if we were to raise.
Right.
Connection fees slightly.
Right. What I did is I, and he said 4 million, actually I showed you 4.7 million. I took $15 million for the AMI and did it over 10 years at 3% to get that payment, it was 1.5 million. And then I did the, let's see, I got it right here, that was 1.8 million, yeah, and I did 3% over 15 years for the disinfection, 1.4 million. And then O and M pipe replacement, I added another 1.5 million, so I looked to generate 4.7 million. And this one got me close to generating 4.7 million a year. So, but what we could do is I'll, I'll have Todd show how his increases were and put it in, in all of our tiers, he only showed the 5,000 and under. We'll show it all the way across and we'll, we'll have a selection, I mean, we can all look at it and tweak it as needed.
I like that.
So based on my math here, an average or below average user base fee plus zero to 5,000 is paying 10, 13, 1085 a month. And under this proposed rate, it would be 1385 a month, so you're looking at $3 increase. So I mean, as, I mean, when we saw this in summer, I felt okay with it, I still, if, you know, I, I wouldn't be against the vote if this is what was put forward, but if, if adjusting connection fees allows us to potentially lower that a little bit, I mean, some balance there. You know, I definitely would like to see that option as well, so.
Does that sound good, Todd? I mean.
Yeah, there's a bunch more moving parts we have to say.
Okay.
We just take it to another level of detail, so.
Yeah.
We like detail here in Norman.
This is not a deal breaker for me though.
Right.
Okay, Councilor Hall?
Yeah, I'm just weighing in on, I love the word balance and I think we've heard from our community for years that we want to have a connection fees that actually reflect what it costs to come online, so I'm really interested in, in finding that sweet spot. But it also is critical that we can educate our community and make everybody understand the importance of why we want to invest in our future and invest in, you know, why it's so important to raise water rates. And I think what this just continues to reinforce is that we cannot wait six years, five years, I mean, this is something that has to be an ongoing, ongoing conversation within our community so that we're not put in this position over and over and over again to wait so long that we're required to make that leap and then get the community to buy in. And if it's more of a yearly review or several year review, it, it's just something that we live with all the time.
Yep.
So, that's it.
Any other comments? All right, thank you for that thorough presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We actually, it's your fault. Okay, on to item two, discussion regarding the lease and/or sale of properly located at 101, 112, 113, 115, 116 and 118 West Gray Street.
So this, this won't take near as long, but the detail's not, not quite that deep either. We received a phone call, we actually did a Zoom last week with one of the principals of Factory Obscura. They made contact initially through Councilmember Peacock and we arranged the opportunity. The principal we spoke with was, was actually in France at the time and informed us that they were in a position to advance their project here in Norman, Oklahoma. They had spent the last handful of months in the fundraising mode and sought private investment into the creation of what the Norman Factory Obscura experience might be like. And so we talked about what date might they be in a position to join us in a study session with council and talk about where they are on their, on their financing for the project. And the principal asked us a question. Might there be flexibility in terms of the real property deal to satisfy some of the, the needs or demands of some of their investors? And what that may look like is kind of a two-pronged approach. There are so many ways this deal could be put together that work really, really well for both the city of Norman and the folks at Factory Obscura that always look out for the protection of the Norman taxpayers in the end. And we wanted to bring you these two scenarios and get your input and make sure one of them is not a absolute no, don't go down that path before December 16th.
November.
Oh, November 16th, we'll have the Factory Obscura here, folks here. We just want to make sure we all understand the, the rules of engagement prior to that next step with Factory Obscura. So Catherine, put together what these two options look like and how we are able to protect the block and the Norman taxpayers in that process.
Council Street.
I want to ask a question before we get that started. I know Councilmember Bearden, whenever she was in my seat, had brought up the fact that there was some controversial things with Factory Obscura, those are still here and it's all about who we're doing business with, just like I talked to the police.
to the police about accepting that grant from somebody that has poor business practices. And is some of the things that they have done, you know, that they have controversy around, is that somebody that we as the City of Norman really wanna get in bed with? And also Kate Beerman had brought up the fact that there are other artists locally that would love to do something similar to what Factory Obscura does. And have we reached out and done our due diligence for our artists that represent Norman that work really hard in our community that would like to maybe do something similar?
So have not heard about any controversial issues behind the folks at Factory Obscura, but we're happy to chase those down. Our dealings so far include several meetings with the group, conversations with their primary investor in Oklahoma City and recognizing their relationship with the big one in that particular space being Meow Wolf in New Mexico. And Meow Wolf being kind of their sponsor for this particular endeavor here in Norman. There are very few people who we know do what these few groups do. And it would be one thing to say, you know, local artists might like to engage in such an experience versus a group that is currently doing it. So, yeah, there's probably more of an entrepreneurial or startup level of risk you might experience with a group who does not have a track record in providing such a venue. So this group reached out to us. We didn't go solicit any proposals from anybody. The building's been sitting there for years. I think in one of Catherine's slides, we talked about, we purchased it in 2011, I think. And this is the first outside interest in occupying that space to my knowledge. If we do have local artists who would be interested, and of course, Mr. Francisco sits on the Arts Council Board and we are heavily invested in the arts here in Norman and would love, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. I don't think Factory Obscura means nobody else can do it. And I think the more the merrier. If there were another artist or group...
Let me just speak with what my Arts Council had. The Arts Council's extremely excited about this. The OU School of Fine Arts sends their students to Factory Obscura. And they know that this will create a lot of opportunities for their students to display, to act, to sing in this facility.
All right.
Can I add just a little bit to that?
Councilmember Peacock?
Factory Obscura also has a business model, which they've proven they can get 900,000 visitors through their space. And that's a 9,000 square foot space and what we're talking about here, something like a 35, 40,000 square foot space. You can just, you know, quickly do the math that the impact on the community is something far greater than any of our current entities could provide. And that's not an indictment on those groups, it's just apples and oranges, I think.
Okay. All right, Ms. Walker?
Okay, I'll try and be brief. Just wanted to kinda show you the sites. We're talking about sites both on the north and south side of Gray here that were all purchased in one transaction. So you can see these lovely buildings. No longer says service experts, but it does house some of our facility maintenance folks and supplies for their job duties. And then the old Couch Center, of course. This is about, all three of these buildings is about 19,000 or so square feet of built-out space on a little over half an acre. It's part of the Center City Form Based Code, Urban General. That's generally retail, commerce, those kinda things on the bottom floor, residential above. Of course, with the legacy zoning in place, if these buildings weren't altered or added to increasing their square footage by more than 50%, they would be in the C2 zoning category. 101 and 113 were built in 1940 and then the 115 was built in 1955, so pretty old buildings. These are the sites across the street. There's three parcels, for some reason, divided that way, but they're all vacant and covered with gravel. I did not realize we owned these until probably a couple of years ago. Again, it's about the same size, approximately 19,500 square feet, less than half an acre, same zoning there. So we bought these properties in 2011 from the Moraine family who were ready to sell them and we bought them for municipal purposes. And that'll be important here in a minute, with funds obtained or financing where we pledged capital fund revenues. We bought it for 1.65 million dollars and then it was transferred to our own municipal authority in 2012. In that memo in 2011 that went along with this transaction, we identified those potential future municipal uses to include location for the facilities management division, municipal court, central location for development services, storage and expansion of municipal and public parking. This is a history of our Norman Forward and our library project. This was before Norman Forward allowed the library to move out. And so all of those dominos had not fallen and we were looking for other, had not fell and we were looking for other options. Structures on that north side of Gray have been used for storage and facilities management. And then of course, you saw the lots on the south side are still vacant. So this is a little bit about the zoning and it's important to talk about the Center City piece because of those vacant lots. So, purpose in Urban General is to develop the multi-story buildings with three or more dwelling units within a, within single or attached structures and/or mixed use, placed directly at the sidewalk or behind small door walls. And this would really be the first, if something were to be built on this land in accordance with CCFBC, it would be the first compliant building we've seen in downtown Norman. One that didn't come forward with the PUD or need any exceptions. And so it's a really unique opportunity if it were able to meet the code.
What do you know?
Legacy zoning, C2 is the zoning. And so that incorporates everything in C1 and then also the uses in C2. And so they can maintain that on these existing structures if they don't exceed 50% of the square footage of the existing structure in addition. Lots of things are used, allowed here, artist studio, amusement enterprise, not defined, but I've been to Factory Obscura, I think that probably fits, gift shop and office So the city's authority to sell or lease property is set forth in our charter, it's set forth in state law, and there's interesting case law out there that sort of refines what you find in state law. And it's of course, the City of Norman case from 1977. So the charter says the city can hold, lease, mortgage, convey or otherwise dispose of any of its property. Sounds easy, just get rid of it whenever you want. State law kinda says the same thing. However, the courts have interpreted this state law as allowing a city to hold and dispose of property in two capacities. So if you buy property for the municipal corporation to use as an entity, office space, storage space, development services building, municipal court, whatever we thought we were doing in 2011, then the power of the municipal corporation to dispose of that property is unquestioned. Other things like parks, municipal dump lands, I think that's the Norman case, other things used for the public use and benefit of the citizens, it's a little bit harder to get rid of that property. You've gotta justify and document that the public use has been abandoned or the property is no longer suitable or adequate for the purpose to which it was dedicated. So as Daryl said, we were approached by Factory Obscura in spring of 2021 about creating a much larger scale immersive art experience in downtown Norman. Council discussed this in April, but I know we have several new faces at the table, so that's why it's backed today and we wanna get some input. So part of the challenge, I think Factory Obscura sees a lot of benefit in being in downtown Norman. But a lot of the buildings in downtown Norman are of historical significance and much more challenging to convert to this type of use. The museum believes the city's Gray Street properties could be converted. It would tie in nicely with some other upcoming projects we have in the area when we make Gray Street into a two-way street. James Garner Avenue improvements will go right by this. So it's an opportunity for some new development and some redevelopment in an area that's going to be changing significantly in the next few years. Since our meeting in April, Factory Obscura has been working on soliciting investments and they have gotten a number of investments and have reached a dollar figure, I think, where they feel comfortable with engaging in further negotiations. But those investors have expressed some concerns. Obviously, they, the museum wants to make sure there's enough space for what they need to do so that they can provide that return on investment. And the investors, I think, are a little bit worried about investing on the basis of a short-term arrangement. They want something longer term, something more permanent. And then I think low-cost financing is something that, of course, they're interested in that would make the project more financeable. So these are the scenarios we've kind of been working on and we have a long way to go before we get anything final. And I just wanna point out that performance standards should always drive your decision-making in an economic development project. It's really important to ensure a return on the city's investment. It doesn't have to be dollar for dollar back in our pocket, but it should be something that we can reasonably tie to whatever we're incentivizing. So what we are talking about with them is how many quality jobs would you be adding? Each full-time job under the state quality job formula has to pay at least $41,916 per year and provide benefits. So how many of those type of jobs are you going to provide? And what timeline would those be coming on? And we did this in our one other economic development incentive agreement and that was with Emmy. We had a whole schedule of when these jobs would come on, what they were anticipated to pay and how that incentive would be figured based on the amount of the pay. And so that there's a formula for that and it's pretty easy to determine and verify as jobs come online. We could also include standards related to the number of visitors. Visitors mean revenue for them, potentially revenue for Norman when they're coming in from out of town. Being downtown, that's another benefit. You come to the museum, you don't just turn around and drive back to Oklahoma City or Edmond or Moore. You might go shop downtown, you might go eat at a restaurant, that kinda thing. And then something that will be very important is clawbacks if the standards are not met. That's something that should be in every agreement like this. So some measurable standard and some consequence if that's not met to ensure we're protecting the city's investment, whatever that is. So we wanted to be responsive to the concern of the investors that, you know, we don't wanna invest for something that's short-term. So we've talked about a long-term lease, maybe a nominal lease rate to get them in a position where they could recoup their investment more quickly. But then that renewal of the lease would then be at a negotiated market rate. We've talked about a purchase. Perhaps it's a low-market purchase price, but contingent on performance standards, we get a reversionary right for a period of time if standards are not met. And then if they ever want to sell it, we would get a right of first refusal after that. Really just trying to protect that property, both for the city's investment, but then long-term use, as this is the city campus, if that facility ever moved out of that site, that's probably something we'd wanna have a shot at getting back if we, as we grow, 25, 30 years down the road. We've also talked about, is there a possibility that we could arrange for some financing in conjunction with a long-term lease? And the Cleveland County Industrial Authority has talked to Factory Obscura and is willing to discuss financing a portion of the improvements, the rehabilitation or the construction. The city would still receive the lease payments, but we'd likely pledge a portion of those lease payments to the Cleveland County Industrial Authority to make those payments for the financing. This could be at least a purchase arrangement as well. Those are just details we've gotta continue to work on and work out. We obviously need a lot of more information, budgets, you know, the amount of the investment, the number of jobs, the pay of the jobs, that kinda thing, before we can move forward. But this is just sort of the framework we're looking at. In any scenario listed here, of course, Factory Obscura's anticipating that its payments would be made primarily from admission and gift shop revenue. As Councilmember Peacock said, they bring in quite a lot of visitors in their Oklahoma City location. And I think just a ticket to mixtape is $17 an adult, is that right? Trying to remember from when I went. And so it's, can be quite a revenue producer. And so that's of course, how they're gonna try and operate their museum and pay off any lease payments debt, anything like that would be coming from that revenue. So with that, that was quick, but I wanted to throw that out there for some discussion to help us as we move forward in our talks with them.
Do they have a preference between long-term lease or purchase?
I don't, I don't know. I think, I suspect they would really prefer to purchase, but they definitely want something long-term to give their investors some assurance.
To me, that says they're confident in the project, so I think that's awesome. Councilwoman Holman?
Yeah, I, if we were, if we are gonna go forward with this, I definitely would want to do a long-term lease. I think that makes sense. And I definitely like the idea of the city being able to buy or get the property back if any, if it, you know, goes out. So I think that's a good idea on our part as well. So, so yeah, those are the, and working with the Cleveland County Industrial Authority, that sounds like a good option to explore there as well. So, so yeah, I don't wanna do a short-term lease or anything like that that would make it harder for them to do it. So I think those are pretty good scenarios.
Councilwoman Hall?
Yeah, I think one of the most important things to me is whether it's a purchase type of thing or a long-term lease, probably would prefer the long-term lease, but it's the option for the city to get the first right to get it back. Because while I like their confidence in their long-term plan, we've already established this is prime real estate in Norman. We haven't exactly got it to the highest and best use just yet. But I really would like to have the opportunity and the possibility of getting it back under the city if for some reason they don't stay in business.
And Councilmember Hall, we recognize that in the event, we talked about all kinds of interesting art scenarios, five years from now, they put glasses on you and all your experience happens just right there on your face and they say, we don't need the building anymore. The building we would get back under those scenarios would be greatly improved over the building we have today, which is very, very rough. So whether we make the investment or they make the investment, at the end of the day, we think the value in the neighborhood is definitely going up and the taxpayers would benefit from that at the end of this program, if that's, you know, five years, 10 years or 40 years down the road.
And just, you know, to, just generally considering the interest that Factory Obscura has in coming to Norman, to kinda look at it as, you know, the rising tide raises all ships. So we are already becoming very well-known for being an arts community and we have a lot of local artists and it just seems like the more that we can mass that investment in raising our profile of being a welcoming arts community, that I would hope that that would already encourage the artists that we have here in place and maybe elevate the things that they're able to do too. So that's kinda how I look at that. Then on the whole issue of it being in Center City Form Based Code, to your point, Gray Street has really not hit where it can be and where I am enthusiastically believing it will be, but we already have the possibility of other very exciting projects that are highly likely to come to Gray Street as well. So I think it's gonna be interesting to, you know, see, the legacy zoning, I think, will work out fine on the buildings that we already own. Have they said what they would wanna do with the lots across the street? Do we know that?
I think they have some preliminary ideas. I'm hesitant to say them because I think they're very preliminary, but they do have some exciting ideas for that side of the street that would provide some connection to the north side.
So just the whole idea of what the Urban General is intended to accomplish in Center City with that mixed use, and there are a lot of creative ways that you could go about achieving that mixed use that's intended for the Urban General, I'm really excited to see what they come up with there too. So all in all, I, everybody that I've asked about just what they think about Factory Obscura coming to town, it's really been very positive reception and I hope we can continue to work to figure out how we can get this done.
Councilwoman Lynn, is your hand up?
Yes.
Okay.
So, we're talking about the city paying a portion of their lease if they do come here?
Operating a low nominal lease rate.
Well, to go back to previous discussions, I would say that that would be subsidizing growth. If you wanna do it in this area, I don't know why you're so opposed against it in other areas. That's all I gotta say.
Sorry, Councilwoman Peacock, your hand is right behind Councilwoman Schuler's water bottle. Uh, Councilwoman Peacock?
Yeah, I mean, I think you're absolutely right and I think... Yeah, I mean, I think you're absolutely right, and I think, is the investment worth it? That's all, I'll leave it at that. To address some of the artist concerns, I think, you know, they're a top, Factory Obscura is just a top-tier organization, and they pay all of their artists full salary and full health care benefits, so they are well taken care of in terms of job creation. They've already pledged to work with Norman Public Schools to do outreach in the public school system. They've already reached out to the University of Oklahoma to be a pipeline for internships and apprenticeships. So they've really engaged the community, you know, in ways that I kind of didn't anticipate them to. So it's been a nice surprise. I just want to put a little weight into the purchase box, and everybody's leaning more towards the lease, but this is in the Center City TIF. And currently, it's a city-owned building, which means it's not on the tax rolls and contributes nothing to the TIF. So if we were to sell the building, it goes from a $0 assessed value to instantly a $20, $20 million project, potentially. So just something to keep in the back of your, in your pocket while we're thinking about this going forward. I think that the purchase, the purchase approach really makes a lot of sense. I mean, I know there's some heartburn there, but in terms of long-term health and long-term viability of the project and Gray Street, I really think that makes a lot of sense.
I don't have much else to add besides that. I did have the opportunity to meet some of the owners, thanks to Councilmember Peacock taking to an event in Oklahoma City, which I loathe going to Oklahoma City if I can avoid it, love to hate it, right? But they were incredibly pleasant, and we're excited to come to Norman. They're like, we want to be there. We appreciate what Norman is, what it offers, what it stands for, and that was just really nice to hear. You know, we always get seen as anti-development, and people want to come here and help us reinvigorate a key piece of our downtown area with all of these projects coming together. You know, I'm very excited to see this move forward. And I love your point, Councilmember Peacock, about the Center City TIF. That was my point, was, hey, we want to see something go into that and actually see it pay off something at some point. Here it is. So, any other comments? Am I gathering neither is horrifying to us?
All options on the table for our conversation in a couple of weeks.
We've got the purchase route, still interested in being able to.
Inversionary routes.
Yeah.
Right, it sounds very important.
I'm glad that you're already looking at that, so. All right, well, seeing no other comment, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.